November the 19th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Just so you know, our meeting is recorded live on Facebook, so you are being recorded here this evening if you were unaware. The prayer, if you would, please stand. The prayer will be by Planning Director Scott Ankersen and the pledge by Councilman and former Mayor Gordon Gilat.
Father God, we gather tonight to give you honor, we give you praise, God. We thank you for many blessings, God, and our wise father. We thank you that your presence is with us daily, Lord, as you promised, God. We thank you for your hedge protection that you place around this city, Father and citizens, God. Lord, we just ask that you be with this council tonight, lead, guide, direct them as they conduct the city business. And most of all, Father, we thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, his sacrifice for our sins on Calvary's cross. And we ask all this in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in honoring the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat, and thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Ms. Shanksy? Do we have a motion by council to approve the agenda order?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? All in favor? Councilman George?
Ah.
Motion carries. Councilman George and our city attorney, Mr. Danos, are on the phone conference line. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shanksy.
The Gochay Center Thanksgiving Lunch will be Wednesday, November the 20th, starting at 11:30 AM. The Gochay Rotary Club will host its annual Rotary Christmas Parade on Saturday, December 7th, at 12:00 PM. Following the parade, lights and lighting up on the body will be Saturday, December 7th, starting at 1:00 PM at the former senior promontory.
Thank you, Ms. Shanksy. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and we do not have one this evening. So that brings us to business agenda item number one. Authorization to acknowledge bids and award contract for the city of Gochay's annual hot bat- Batuminous pavement contract.
I'm doing.
Go ahead, Ms. Shanksy.
As you know, we went out to have an annual asphalt bid contract that also included milling. This contract under the statute could go for five years. So that way, if you want to pave a road, you can just issue a PO about how many bid every single road. You got two bids. One was from Huey P., Stockstill, and you got a bid for milling only on from Mallet Brothers. So the recommendation of H2O and staff is that you approve the contract for hot Batuminous pavement from Huey P., Stockstill, and as an alternate, you recommend, we recommend that you approve the Mallet Brothers for milling.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shanksy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? No. Do we have a motion by council to acknowledge the receipt of the bid for the project and award the contract to the city of Gochay's, for the city of Gochay's annual hot Batuminous pavement contract to Huey P., Stockstill, and the alternate Mallet Brothers construction for milling?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Is this, have we spoken to both contractors, and they're all right with that? I know Huey P. had put a bid in for milling also under the contract. Can we split this up between those two?
Well, I think we, you know.
I went under the advice of Brian Vance, or Brian Nelson with H2O, who said that we could split it up that way. I did not talk to the individual contractor.
We, what, we used to, we used to award asphalt west of the river, the county, east of the river. And best I can understand, it won't make me wrong, but one Mallet was actually cheaper on milling, correct?
That's correct.
And Huey Stockstill was cheaper on the asphalt.
Well, I mean, I mean, Mallet didn't bid on the asphalt at all, they just bid on the milling, where Huey bid on both asphalt and the milling. I just want to make sure, being that we did this per bids, state bid laws, that we could actually award it to different contractors.
Yes.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
Tell me again how we're going to determine what roads is going to be paved under this contract?
Well, you still have roads that need to be paved that were on the paving list.
Correct.
But the council would have to vote on what road they want to pay.
So can we get?
On recommendation of probably H2O, your public works director.
Okay, can we be provided the list that has been previously turned in and what has not been paved, so the council could review it?
Yes.
And maybe we could submit back, say, hey, these are still good roads, will we want to change for each particular ward, whatever it is? And then H2O could take a look at which ones should be first, based upon the, you know, the.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll get to it.
Okay, all right, that's what I would like to see, because I think we need to relook at the list that has been turned in. And we got roads that we've submitted to the county for, how far back that hasn't been paid? Can you?
If I'm not mistaken, we're two years behind, and they started on.
How many?
I think it was two. And they started on the list and then got pulled off. So.
Right.
We got to figure out which ones were paved and which ones still remain on the list.
Right.
And go from there.
Then submit those that has not been paid back to us to say, okay, I still want this one at the top of my list or whatever. Okay?
Sure.
When can we get the list? Tomorrow?
I'll send it out.
Well, by next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Did you say something, Councilman Anderson?
No.
I thought I heard your voice. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you very much. I'd rather check the streets myself, the ones that I need. When we get ready to do the paving list, I'll ride on the street, see which ones, I'll see which ones I want paid. But I, the list that I gave you, the ones named, they're pretty much going to be the same. Right?
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
No question.
Thank you. I echo what Councilman Gilat is saying, if we can look at the list in each ward, but if we can, because the board of supervisor has adopted a list, so us work, so we're not, you know, if they're getting ready to come here and they've already issued POs, we're not going to, we just need to work with the, we're going to work with them, is what I understood. So just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Yes.
Thank you. We got a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Councilman George?
Yea.
Motion carries. That brings us to business item, agenda item number two. Consideration of a special exception that would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without a primary structure in an AG agriculture zoning district located at 5900 Brown Road, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC 24-50-SE. By our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, the planning department received this request for Matthew and Holly Ruffin for the special exception that will allow the successor structure to be located on a lot without primary structure. The application fee, $250, will pay on September 20th, 2024, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some background on this property, this has actually been brought before to y'all in recent past. If you remember, I think it was kind of a haphazard request where the previous owners didn't really know what they wanted to do with this property. I believe upon review of this application, y'all will see that these applicants have a clear, precise, detailed plan of what they want to do. This has an accessory structure on the property, it used to have a primary house that was damaged and torn down. They want to get power on the successor structure, they want to use it solely for storage, as their application details. I've given the review criteria for a special exception as outlined on our open three year review. And upon hearing this, planning commission recommended the city council do approve a special exception provided. The applicant built a primary structure within two years, which the applicant had expressed in the meeting that they were okay with. The city council may approve a special exception, approve a special exception with changes or deny a special exception. Again, I've included the four pack maps of the application review.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen.
That was here tonight.
Do you have any public comments? Do we have any public comments? No. Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve the applicant to build a primary structure within two years on the, that would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without primary structure in an AG agriculture zoning district located at 5900 Brown Road, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number 24-50-SC, PID number 82429350.000.
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman College, we got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No question.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Yea.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Ruffin, for investing in Gochay. Thank you. That brings us to business agenda item number three. Consideration of a special exception that would allow a tattoo shop in a C2 community commercial zoning district located at 3204 Ladner Road, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC 24-51-SE. By planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received this request from Shannon Tressibon for a special exception that will allow tattoo shops in C2 community commercial districts. Application fee, $250, was paid on September 26th, 2024, all public notice requirements have been met. The applicant's requesting to open a tattoo shop at this location, it is a C2 district, not allowed by right, expected to require a special exception, approved by council, just while we're here. I will remind council that we have approved a special exception for a tattoo shop in the C2 district in the past. So I've also included the review criteria as outlined on orders for special exception. And upon hearing this, the planning commission recommended the city council approve a special exception, given the information provided to them. The city council may approve a special exception, approve a special exception with changes or deny a special exception now. It's here tonight. Any question?
Okay. Any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve a special exception that would allow a tattoo shop in a C2 community, community commercial zoning district located at 3204 Ladner Road, Suite 4, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC 24-51-SC, PID number 82436075.050 and 82436075.052.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, so in a C2, you're saying that it's not allowed, there's no allowance for a tattoo?
Not by right.
Not by right.
So which, which one, which zone is allowed?
Um, I would have to look at the ordinance, possibly a C3, that would be the only other district, and maybe a town center, but the C2 wasn't allowed by right.
Okay. And you're saying by right, what do you mean by right?
By right would mean that it's already listed in the ordinance that it's allowable use in that district, and they can basically just come before the planning department and just apply, and then get their license if they, once they go through the inspection process.
Okay. All right, no further questions.
We got a motion, Councilman George, any comment?
No question.
Okay. We got a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. Uh, Councilman George?
Okay.
Motion counseled.
All right.
We want to thank you for investing in Gochay and look forward to your many years here.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That brings us to the docket of claims, business agenda item number four. They've been provided to us by the city clerk. They've been posted on our social media and on our website. So that is the staff presentation. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion from council?
I make a motion, we approve the Dr. Page five, that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered, not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
Yea.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Yea.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, we approve those, all in one motion, unless somebody wants to pull one on the board. Anybody want to pull one? Okay. Consent agenda item number one, approval of minutes from recess council meeting held for December, November the 5th, 2024. Two, approval of water and sewer adjustments for November 2024 in the amount of $22,669.05. Three, authorization to accept monetary donation for the city of Gochay's Cruisin' Through the Decades event. Four, authorization to enter into a grant agreement with the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for the FY 2025 Titlelands funding for the Fairway Drive Boat Launch and Pier Project. Five, authorization to acknowledge bids and award contract for San Lorenzo and Cypress Landing at Ferry Point Streambank stabilization and debris sediment removal, NRCS 2021, NR244423XXXXC001. Six, approval of a non-exclusive, non-exclusive use agreement for Buddy Davis Park. Seven, resolution approving the sponsorship of Gochay Rotary Club Christmas Parade to be held on December the 7th, 2024. Eight, resolution approving closure of roads and traffic control measures for the Gochay Rotary Club Christmas Parade on December the 7th, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve, consent one through eight?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor? Councilman George?
Yea.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. First up is discuss citizen comments. First, Shaymin Resavet, I can't, it's in cursive.
Tressibon?
Tressibon, I think it was him and he owns, so he already spoke and left, it was his business. Scott Jones with Waste Pro.
Hi there, just real quick, I had a little incident.
State your name and address, who you're with.
Scott Jones, Willcall, 3205 Beastly Road, Waste Pro office. We had a little incident this morning in a major area, about the worst kind possible. Really want to give a huge shout out to H2O and City Crews, they showed up, and they cleaned us up really, really fast, and it's greatly appreciated, coming together like that, taking care of citizens, like, get back to the country, so, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott, for y'all's hard work too, and our police department for their hard work. That brings us to Mr. McClendon, or McClendon D.
Is this for, like, complaints and stuff?
Well, you can stand up and state your first and last name, and if you have an issue, you can talk about it, or you can talk to your councilman after the meeting if you want.
Just go through it and you don't talk to the councilman after?
After the meeting, so you don't want to speak publicly?
No, I'll talk now.
Okay, just come to the podium, state your first and last name, and what you, you have three minutes. Councilman College will hold up this one minute when it gets close to time.
Okay.
And then, when it's over, we'll say that's the end, and we can continue after the meeting, talking to you or whatever.
Okay.
So we'll let you continue, and we won't interrupt you, you just state everything you're going to state, and then we'll answer you.
Okay. You're all right?
Yeah, you can say your first and last name and address, and then your time starts.
Yeah, I'm, 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 King Fisher. Okay, I've been here before, over, uh, when the residents, they come in on Riverside, and then they, they turn it up onto, I'll get to the other street, but over the years, I have had to replace nearly my whole side fence and over five mailboxes. And the house in front of me, which is 1512, and the house to the side of me, which is 1517, now their fence is knocked down. So it's, it's one stop sign on that, on that entire block there. When we come in Riverside, and it's one, it's only one on Ivorywood, and they never want to stop by it. So a lot of times, we have parents chasing people down, telling them to slow down, because it's always kids walking, day and night. And on the weekends, it's even worse, weekends and holidays, it's worse, the speeding and the running, the, the stop sign there. I asked before if, if they can put up speed bombs, but I was told it would raise the taxes there. So I was just wanting to make them put up, maybe some more stop signs. Like I said, over the years, I planted plants, and even extended my fence line, boom, is gone. And I'm constantly buying soil, because they, they cut through the yard just to avoid a stop sign, which is, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a big little three ways, it's plenty of room there, you know? Yeah, they running, either turning, okay, either turning left or right, you know they running, and they're constantly speeding with kids. I don't know if I said it earlier, but holidays and weekends is, is worse. Like I said, it's getting costly repairing that fence line, I have to pay to have that, and, and replacing the mailbox. I, I have a being in it now, I'm just waiting for it to be knocked down again before I replace it. And I have photos of when I was hit last, and the person was sighting, and was, like, they're running in the yard, so like I said, it's just potholes, and you have to buy dirt to fill the holes, you know? It's just a year round thing there.
Ms. McClendon, can I get your address, please?
I'm at 1512 King Fisher.
King Fisher?
Yes.
You're in, you're in my ward now?
Yes, sir.
And these are vehicles leaving the street?
Mm-hmm.
Vehicles leaving the street and running up the fences?
Yes, yes, sir. What it is, is the, like, the stop sign is, like, right here, that's coming from Riverside, so this is Ivorywood, this is the stop sign. So they don't want to stop, so they're, I mean, I have to move my car around on the weekends, because I have a concern of them literally running into it, so I have to turn it another way in order to avoid that. But I guess, you know, they see the stop sign, but for some reason, they just want to cut through the yard, and like I said, they knock down the mailbox and stuff, and then, when they go to the right, you can see where, you can see the tire marks. And right now, their mailbox is down.
Running stops, running the stop signs, one thing, but running through people's yards, something else.
Constantly.
And that needs to be monitored, and something done about it.
Yes.
I'm going to drive up and look at it.
Okay.
Could I ask you a question? Have you reported this to the police department?
I did, I, I called them.
And what was the recommendation at that time?
Well, we discussed that, you know, it was good that no one was hurt. This was like in October, this was the last time I got hit. But a week or two after that, the person to the right of me, their, their mailbox got knocked down.
Were charges ever signed on anybody, do you know?
No, because the first time, which was, maybe, it was maybe like two years ago, and the reason why we put up the fence, because they was just getting closer and closer to the house, cutting through. But the, the officer in charge, he came out and he did, he wrote a report on it. That was maybe like two years ago.
Ms. McClendon, the city staff will be glad to get with you, and your councilman can also follow up, but the city staff, the city manager and her staff, and our former, they will get with you and will try to resolve your issue for you, okay?
Okay, one other thing?
Okay, you have three minutes.
They think that they're, maybe they're, like, drinking or high or whatever?
Okay.
That's dangerous, these kids.
It is, and it is a good neighborhood, though, you do have a good neighborhood. So we'll get with the, the city manager, her, you, and she'll get with her staff, and then the councilman of that ward, and Councilman College is also at large, and myself, and we'll try to get you some answers.
Okay.
Okay? And thank you for coming. You're more than welcome to show us the pictures after the meeting, we'll be glad to look at them.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our discuss, um, yes, she's the only one. So that brings us to.
You got somebody to go. I guess they're going to do.
Did you, you didn't sign it? What's it regarding? Did you not see the signing sheet in the back?
I did not, I apologize, I did.
Okay. Come to the podium and state your first and last name. Are you trying to comment during council comments?
Yes.
Okay. Come to the podium, state your first and last name and address.
Okay.
One at a time.
Okay, my name is Al Hackwork, address is 3131 Dairy Auto Mobile, Alabama. I'm, I'm assuming that this one is ours, I put in on the 1st of November for a non-exclusive park agreement, but it wasn't for Buddy, it wasn't for Buddy Davis Park, it was actually for Baycock Park, and we're trying to hold a youth violence conflict resolution there on the 1st. And so I was told to come to this meet, that we have means.
Who told you to come to this meeting?
The clerk, I don't know her by name per se, but I went to that. I went on the 1st of November to the, to the window up here, to request, so I put in a request for it, and they said that they'll vote on it on the 1st, the 1st and 3rd Tuesday at 6:30, that's why I'm here.
No, sir. You'll, after the meeting, if you'll get with our parking director, she'll be glad to speak to you and explain how the process has to go. Ms. Bilbo? Okay?
Raise your hand, check.
Trustee, right, she'll speak to you after our meeting, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for coming, and thank you for wanting to host an event here in our city. Okay, that brings us to council comments, were y'all all three together? Okay. Councilman Elvin?
Just want to thank all our employees that work each and every day to make our city move forward, and we'll keep y'all in prayer during the holidays as well, as we're celebrating with our families. We'll be thinking about you out there on the streets, working. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, Ms. Shanksy, is there a procedure for retracting a vote on, like, an ordinance that we voted on at the last meeting?
Mayor, that's the city attorney question.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Danos, it's the city attorney question. Councilman Anderson is asked, can he retract his vote on an item at the last meeting? Can?
I think that, that it would be a motion to rescind the action, otherwise, just note in the, in the minutes that, wherever the vote was, that he wishes to recant.
Okay, so when we do the minutes, which we're not voting on the minutes tonight from that?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we did vote on those minutes, so is he, we already voted on the minutes, so now what do you want him to do? Mr. Danos?
Let me get with Councilman Anderson and find out what we're talking about, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Do it next meeting?
He said he'll get back with you at the next, he'll get back in touch with you.
Thank you. That's all.
I think after you vote on the minutes and everything, it's, that's how it is, but that's how I think I've learned at Mississippi Municipally, Mr. Danos, but that'd be between y'all.
Asked that question a couple of times, and I hadn't got an answer on it, or I would have done it before.
Okay. Is that all you had, councilman Anderson? Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Galot?
No comments. Next week, Thanksgiving? Well, happy Thanksgiving to all you folks out there. I hope y'all have a wonderful holiday, because I know I am. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
She was mentioning, a young lady, was mentioning about speed bumps. I know, you know, we got insurance has a little frenzy about the speed bump, but I think we need to look into that to consider certain designated areas to have speed bumps in some form or fashion, because we're going to keep getting a lot of complaints of people speeding, and the police department is not going to be able to catch them in neighborhood areas. It's going to be very difficult for them to track their speed, their speed through residential, because it's an incident that happened, it happened instantly. So it's just something that we just need to think about and consider, and find a way to, to make speed bumps happen for the city of Goche in some form or fashion, somewhere in certain designated areas. I just think we just need to think about that. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
No discussion.
And you wish your little darling a happy fifth birthday from Mayor Von and the Goche city council and our administration here in Goche.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I just want to, you know, echo what others have said. First of all, thanks to our city employees, but also I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and remember what Thanksgiving is about. It is about being thankful. A lot of people in today's society are ungrateful and not thankful for what they might not realize they have, or things they might not realize they take for granted, that we should be thankful for. We're blessed to live in a community that I feel is rich, and when I say rich, it is giving, it's caring. We care about our veterans, our youth, our senior citizens, and everyone. So with that being said, I want to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, and if you feel the need, make sure you thank somebody, or thank, tell somebody what you're thankful for, and also rely on your faith, if you believe, because that is what keeps a community going also. And we're blessed to have a lot of churches here in Goche that continue to pray for the evil ones that continue to try to destruct Goche. I also want to thank our city staff that worked on Veterans Day, our city staff that also set up for Veterans Day, and I want to thank the American Legion Post nineteen ninety-two, our first responders who attended, our citizens, and one person that attended that was a city staff that was not normally on duty was Ms. Brenda over here, and she does a lot. She handles grants and projects, she helps with the mayor's youth council, she fills in for Sam, she does, and in the city of Goche, we have a limited staff that does the job of about five other people in our other cities, our sister cities. So kudos, Brenda, for all your hard work, and it don't go unnoticed, and we appreciate you. This morning, my phone was ringing off the hook, and I went to help. Yes, you heard Waste Pro had a little incident, but they were thankful for the hard workers. Thank you to our police department, thank you to H two O and their team, and also thanks Waste Pro for their team for coming out also and helping. It was a team effort, and that is what Goche, Mississippi is about. People working together to grow Goche together, and that is what we will continue to do here in the city of Goche. Also, if you've not liked our city Facebook page or the Sound Amphitheater page, I encourage you to do so. If you have not heard, we got a Christmas act coming, and it's going to be phenomenal, and we're going to have a lot of Christmas sounds at the Sound Amphitheater on the Singin' River and the Mississippi Sound. So Goche, Mississippi is where you're going to want to be on December the twenty-third, because we have yours truly Chapel Heart Mississippians coming right here to Goche, Mississippi. I also want to encourage you, as you heard earlier, to attend our Christmas festivities that we will have, the Parks and Wreck Department at the mall, Town Commons property next to Belk. We will also, let's start that off with the Goche Rotary Christmas Parade. If you're interested, follow Goche Rotary on social media, the applications there, or you can also get them here at City Hall. LaShonda has them if you come, the applications. It will be a great time, and then we want to thank Goche Pride and their hard work and partnerships for decorating our city entrances, and also their sponsorship for the Christmas from the donation they received for the Christmas fireworks. How many of you all know what Friday night is in Goche, Mississippi?
Football night.
Woo-hoo! There's that alumni. I hear some cheerleaders. Kudos to Ms. Buckston back here. She also is part of the alumni and gave, they fed the football team last week. They also gave a donation to the volleyball team with some funds they've raised. They continue to support our Goche Gators, but we are making history in Goche, Mississippi, and our football team is on the move. If you're available Friday night, I encourage you to get to the Von Wallace Stadium in the swamp, because it's going to be great for Friday night lights. Our Pee Wee Football League, I regret I was out of town due to death in my family and unable to be there for their festivities, but they have done great. They've won their little Super Bowl, and we're just blessed for those little Gators running around Goche, and those darlings are doing just as good as our big Gators. The cheerleaders, the bands, the choir, they're all cheering them on to victory. Also, I want to say thank you to everybody who reached out to me over the past week. It wasn't easy, but we made it through because of prayers. Thanks to my home community, thanks to my home community that was in Lake County with me, I felt them there, some of them were present with me to be supportive, but keep my Lake County family and the Chauva County family in your thoughts and prayers. Losing my eighteen, my cousin lost his eighteen-year-old son due to the same way my brother passed away from a widow maker. Tell your loved ones you love them. Tell people what they mean to you, because there's hate running rampant, and you can't take back the hate you stirred up. So please, just pray for everyone. Martin Bluff, last but not least, I want to leave y'all with a happy Thanksgiving, and it's going to be regarding Martin Bluff Road. I want to tell you all, did you know tonight, they are working on Martin Bluff Road every day? When they can, when the weather permits, from Interstate Ten to Goche Van Cleve Road. You might not always see them there, but there's work being done, because guess what? Tonight, we paid over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a half a million dollars. So I think work is being done on a project on Martin Bluff Road. Otherwise, we wouldn't have voted to pay five hundred and fifty plus thousand dollars to that contractor. After Thanksgiving, you can see the concrete going up, then you can see the barricades being moved and lanes being shifted, and we will continue to move forward on that project, and we want to thank Gulf Breeze Landscaping for their hard work and dedication on that. So happy Thanksgiving on that update on that project. It's an honor and pleasure to serve as your mayor, and your council here is blessed to work with us and our staff, and once again, wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Our city manager, Ms. Yancy, we thank you for your hard work, and we hope you enjoy your time off. When I'm on my time off, we can have a great time. That brings us none for her. Does our clerk have anything?
No.
No. Just a reminder, our former government, if you have any issues in our city, please make sure you include your city manager in anything when you're communicating with her. Mr. Danos?
No, sir. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Do we have a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, December the twenty-third, December the third, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M?
So moved.
A motion by councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Galot. I want to thank Mr. Yancy for coming tonight. Our city manager's husband, it's always great to see you here. We have a motion by councilman Jackson, a second by councilman Galot. All in favor? Councilman George?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're adjourned. Safe travels home, everyone.